Recording. Thank you. So I have to read some rules for tonight's hearing. Good evening, I'm Gerard Martin, I'm the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Water Resources at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection or MAST DEP. And we are here at MAST DEP's Lakeville Office on November 30th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for an official public hearing under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38. I am the hearing officer for this hearing. The hearing is being recorded, as you just heard, and conducted in a hybrid format, meaning there are people participating both in person and remotely. The recording will be posted on MAST DEP's website. Spanish and Portuguese translation services are available for MAST DEP staff if needed to tonight's hearing. Those MAST DEP staff will now introduce themselves and ask if any interpretation services are needed.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Millie Garcia Serrano y soy la directora regional de la oficina de la región suresta de MAST DEP, localizada en Lakeville, Massachusetts. Si hay alguien presente que necesite asistencia interpretativa en español, por favor levante la mano usando la función de levantar la mano en su pantalla, o si está aquí presente también levante su mano.
Okay. Flavia?
Buena noche, mi nombre es Flavia Jacobs, yo soy cientista ambiental del escritorio del norte, del Departamento de Protección del Ambiente de Massachusetts. Si hubiera alguien presente en esta audiencia pública que necesite de asistencia con traducción en portugués, por favor levante su mano usando la función Raise Hand en la tela del Zoom, o si usted esté presencialmente levante su mano.
No one has indicated that they will need interpreter.
One hand was raised. Okay. Donald Blah. Put his hand down perhaps it was.
Okay. No one has indicated they need interpretive assistance tonight, so I'll continue. The purpose of this hearing is to accept public comments on MAST DEP's draft proposed amendments to Title V, Regulations at 310 CMR 15.000 to establish natural resource nitrogen sensitive areas and new watershed permitting regulations at 314 CMR 21.00. Before we begin the hearing, here is a protocol by which this hearing will be run. But in-person participants, if you wish to provide public comments, please sign up on the comment sheet, sign-in sheet with your name and, if applicable, your affiliation. We will give elected and appointed officials an opportunity to comment first. After that, we will call on people in order, as they signed up, to come to the podium and provide comments. After that, we will call on remote participants to provide comments. For remote participants, to minimize background noise and interference, the host has muted all remote participants and turned off the chat function. If you desire to comment remotely, please indicate that by raising your virtual hand. You will be unmuted in the order you raise your hands and then asked to state your name and affiliation, if you are speaking on behalf of a group or organization, and provide your comments. Comments, commentators will be limited to three minutes. When you're prompted to provide comments, please come to the podium, as we said, and speak clearly and distinctly. And remember that your comment period will be limited to three minutes. Mary Beth, well, she's a timekeeper, will raise her hand when there are 30 seconds left, and again at the three-minute mark. If you have a comment that was previously raised by somebody else, instead of repeating the comment, you may state the subject matter, the speaker who originally raised the comment, and the perspective with which you agree. If your comments exceed three minutes and you desire additional time, you may be allowed to provide additional remaining comments after other commentators have had a chance to speak, if time allows at the end of the meeting. MAST DEP will not be responding to your comments. Because this is a public hearing, we are only here to listen and record the comments. There are other opportunities to provide verbal public comments. Tomorrow, December 1st, at 1:00 PM, in a fully remote hearing, and on December 5th, at 6:00 PM, at possible town hall. That will be a hybrid hearing. MAST DEP encourage you, encourage you to also submit comments by email to DEP.Talks, T-A-L-K-S, at MAST.gov. Please include Title V and watershed permit in the subject line. The public comment period closes at 5:00 PM on December 16th, 2022. I will now open the hearing for oral comments. Are there any elected officials or appointed officials in the room? Chris Michelle from Dartmouth.
Morning over there.
Yes, please, because we're turning it, Chris, we need to be close to the mic.
Christopher Michelle, County Department Health Department. I'm also a resident of Westport, in the area impacted by these regulations. We spent a great deal of time looking at these regulations, and there's some disturbing aspects of this proposal that we have found. I'm only going to briefly touch upon them, but I am going to write in depth about it during the written comment period. The disturbing aspects are, one, the commissioner expressing in his letter the timeliness of this, because nitrogen, all of a sudden, is this newfound problem. We started some of these studies almost 20 years ago. We teach that nitrogen is a pollutant in elementary school science class. So we are doing this as a reactive measure and not proactive. So whether you're doing something environmentally, from a regulatory manner, proactive or reactive, you really want to be proactive. So these regulations are harsh economically in our area. We have environmental justice areas that are impacted by these regulations. And we're being told the five-year approach or the watershed approach. Well, we have records that reveal that the watershed approach is not likely to work. We've also heard comments from MAST DEP that the five-year approach is not likely to work because of operators, availability of materials, and people that can install them, including installers and electricians. Moreover, if that puts us into the enforcement aspect, is there enough enforcement ability of the regulators? We've heard that MAST DEP will assist. Well, we told that 2,000 homes exist within our community that will be impacted by this regulation. If 50% of those homes comply, that leaves 1,000 homes that will overwhelm the court system, even if the town had enough money for lawyers. And I know there were only a handful of lawyers in the overall region. So with all that being said, we have regulations that cannot be implemented. The goals that have been established by them are doubted by the department in their records that will be provided. IA systems alone, as a department wrote, will not solve the problem. We're not here to say that we're advocating for a degraded environment, but the amount of money that this is going to cost the residents is cruel. The department's known about this for all too long, and now all of a sudden, it's timely. It feels as though that there's something else driving this. And is it that lawsuit that was announced sometime in 2021? So to get one problem off the department's back, we're going to create a whole bunch of others for 2,000 homes in Dartmouth. Thank you.
One of the people in the audience reminded me, if everybody could sell quiet their cell phones, turn off the ringing, that would be great. I think I have to check mine. Right now, any other officials?
Good evening, my name is Robert Almy. I'm the Chair of the Dartmouth Public Works Board. I have for 45 years experience as a professional geologist on both the Pacific and Atlantic coasts. And I have done at least eight projects on Cape Cod having to do with groundwater nitrates and surface water-groundwater interactions. The issue here is not whether local embankments are impaired. The issue is what will be done to improve their water quality. The immediate issue is whether the regulations proposed for Cape Cod are appropriate for all local waterships. They're not. The town of Dartmouth and the DEP need time to work out meaningful measures that will actually improve the Slocum River and Westport watersheds. I recommend a six-month extension of the public comment period during which the towns and DEP can work out a process and issues that will actually work. To date, the process has lacked essential local coordination and consultation. The proposed regulations are inadequate to achieve meaningful environmental improvements. These regulations are based on data that is inadequate, outdated, and wrongfully applied. For example, the geologic setting of Westport and Slocum River's watersheds are substantially different than those on Cape Cod. The superficial materials, bedrock and compacted till differ completely from the moranal and outwash deposits that comprise the watersheds of the Cape. The hydrology and local watersheds are significantly different than the Cape. Their size and complexity of the wetlands is different. Surface water-groundwater interactions are different. The number and nature of extractions, that is, commercial and public wellfields is different. Nitrogen moves differently in these watersheds. The TMDL designation is based on inadequate 22- to 16-year-old data. There are actually gaps in the compliance point data for half of the years that are provided. So, in conclusion, there's been inadequate local consultation. There's been no discussion of alternative approaches. I question the legal basis of the 20-year watershed permits. There is, the existing regulatory framework for control of other nitrogen sources has not been exercised, particularly for composting and agricultural nutrient use. The existing state programs to manage stormwater controls at airports and state highways are completely lacking. These are my comments as an individual. I will recommend these comments to the Board of Public Works at their next meeting, and you can expect a letter from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other officials in the House? That would like to speak now? Okay. Any public officials or elected officials online that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll go down the list and how folks joined us this evening. Sean, first.
Someone was commenting, but we couldn't hear them.
Oh.
So. Please stand by, sorry.
No, no.
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Hi, I've been trying to get through to you guys. My name is Michelle Keith, I'm elected to the Board of Health in Dartmouth. And so at some point, I'd like to speak, I don't need to speak now, but at some point, please remember to give me a chance. Thank you.
Well, this would be a time if you would like to. They're not hearing me. Michelle, you can go, but you may have muted yourself.
Oh, sorry about that. I greatly appreciate and support everything that Chris Mashad has said and Mr. Almay has said. I just want to stress that, you know, we really want to act with common sense. And right now, these proposed regulations just to create a great expense to homeowners without any significant of the nitrogen pollution. And the requirement for the best available technology is a moving target, which will make it difficult for homeowners. And the proposed regulations are based on old data from 22 years ago and based on Cape Cod soils and watershed issues. So it makes this action by the MAST DEP pretty much arbitrary and capricious, because you're basing it on old science, you know, it's really not a solution. And I support delaying this and working together so that we get the outcome. We all want the same outcome. We want to reduce nitrogen. And the current regulations aren't going to do that, because when you're looking at the portion of the the source of nitrogen, it's not the homeowners, that's not the greatest source. So we're going to end up failing in our quest to make our watershed improved. So thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other officials online that would like to speak now?
Can I speak now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mary Jane Masstrangelo, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Board. And we are in the process of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. And these regulations are actually throwing the monkey wrench into our planning, because we don't know what we're going to be able to do. And so I have concerns about the, about DEP being able to process the number of watershed permits that would, could possibly be requested and holding up towns. I have questions about the process for towns. The, I have questions about how how we're going to get all these septic systems done in five years. I think this is a huge burden that's happening, and I think it's going in the wrong direction. I think mandating that Title V systems in sensitive areas be IA systems, so there are no more non-IA systems happening, is one thing. I think talking about the watershed permit process and how best to do it is, is important. I think we need to make progress, but I think this is putting a hammer where it's not going to hit the nail, and it's going to create more problems and more bureaucracy and unnecessary costs for people and towns and a burden on meeting the regulations that is purely meant to, I think, address a question that should have been addressed a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Hello?
Yes.
Phil Weinberg. Oh.
Hey Phil, go ahead.
Hello, this is Phil Weinberg. I'm Vice Chair of the Board of Health for the Town of Westport. So the Title V revisions made it clear that opting to apply for a watershed permit would potentially be less burdensome for homeowner, homeowners and boards of health in upgrading all its septic systems within five years. I think that's an option that's impracticable for many reasons. But I'd still like to focus on the Title V revisions, because they're going to go into effect for Westport and other South Shore communities years before the estuaries are designated natural resource areas. And during that time, homeowners and boards of health will have to live with the Title V revisions. And some of these revisions will unfairly distribute the burden of these technology upgrades, deter further nitrogen reduction, and create implementation and enforcement problems for the boards of health. And just to mention some of them, the definition of what I'm going to call bar the best available reduction technology, that definition equates general use provisional and piloting technology based solely on their nitrogen introduction, nitrogen reduction performance, even though these different qual, these different categories have distinct permitting processes and performance reliability that will continue unchanged. And I think that's going to lead to increased implementation costs for homeowners and administrative burdens on boards of health. So the, there are two exemptions. One is this one-year limit on grandfathering nitrogen reduction systems installed a year prior to the revised regulation date. And that penalized several hundred Westport owners who voluntarily, under Title V or Board of Health regulations, installed what was the best nitrogen-reducing technology at the time. And, and I think the water quality benefits from not including them are going to be minor. And so I think that exemption or that grandfathering should extend back in time. Also, there's an exemption from technology that would only apply after systems were, after the NRA designation. And so in the, in all those years, all the people that voluntarily install or installed nitrogen systems would have to be subject to subsequent retrofit. And again, I think that that is counterproductive. On the water management permit criteria, I think that the department needs to be very flexible in how it applies it related to water quality status. The regulations don't include provision that communities can terminate the permit based on their compliance status. And the enforcement costs are going to be enormous for boards of health. And we're going to need staff, we're going to need funding, technology, and staff assistance by DEP.
That's time.
That's time, Phil.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Sean McDonald, online, did you want to make some?
Yes. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sean McDonald. I'm part of the Dartmouth Select Board. Monday night, I requested the board send a letter to Representative Markey, to Senator Montigny, and to MAST DEP, requesting that the comment period be extended until June 1st, and that the regulations not be implemented for at least another year until January 2024. This will allow time for all the municipalities affected to sit down with DEP to formulate a more cohesive, more responsible watershed regulations. DPW Chairman Bob Almy stated at our meeting that what fits the Cape and the islands does not fit Dartmouth and Westport. And one of the things that really bothered me the most is that Dartmouth, Westport, and none of the, as far as I know, none of the municipalities were ever talked to about formulating these regulations. This is a knee-jerk reaction by MAST DEP about the lawsuit from the CLF. There, and it's unconscion, unconscionable and incomprehensible that no municipality was ever brought to the table to do this. The end results of these regulations will cost homeowners tens of thousands of dollars to install systems to reduce nitrogen that may not reduce at all. Plus the fact that the study that is being looked upon in the Dartmouth area is over 20 years old, and you're using bad data. MAST DEP has dropped the ball on this completely. And the communities of the Commonwealth need to rise up and say, whoa, timeout. And we're in the process of trying to get all the communities to basically tell DEP to back off. Um. Either way, this is bad for everybody all the way around. It's bad for municipalities, it's bad for the citizens, it's bad for the Board of Health, it's bad for the Select Board. Because no matter which way you're going to go, this is basically a thousand cuts by lemon or a thousand couches by lime. It doesn't work. And to be honest with you, the commenting period that MAST DEP set up is a joke. Who does a commenting period during the busiest time of the year, when everybody's attention is family and holidays? This needs to be extended until June 1st. And I will fight to make sure that it gets done.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any other municipal officials online, and so now we're going to try to go through the list. And I'm going to just pick, go in order, as I said, with the people who check that they do intend to comment. Some folks have just had a listen, but if you change your mind, we can accommodate. So now, Sean.
Good. Hi, my name's Captain Sean Nigger. I hold a Masters Unlimited License with the United States Merchant Marine. I've done expeditions in the Arctic, in Southeast Asia, in the South Pacific, all over the world. I grew up on Cape Cod, specifically right around the Bass River area. And when I was young there, I remember I could dive in Bass River and come up with a handful of scallops, which were perfectly good to eat, and go home and then give them to my mother and she would cook them. I'm not so much anymore. There's no more scallops in Bass River. There's a whole lot less fish in Bass River. And this is a trend that I've noticed not only here around Cape Cod, but globally. I just was in Holland last week. I was giving a talk about plastics in the oceans, and one of the examples I used about bad water management was Cape Cod. And I've seen the ponds die here. I've seen, I've seen less fish stocks. And I've literally seen the area that I've grown up in slowly deteriorate. Now, that's all gloom and doom. Part of the other companies that I'm involved in, and some of the nonprofits that I'm involved in, is I'm the Marine and Military Advisor for a company called Engineered Fluids. We're looking at environmental solutions for for electric vehicles. I'm also working on what's going to be the largest fossil fuel sailboat in the world. Anyway, all these things that that are good for the environment. But what I want to just talk to is a little bit about the technology. There's a lot of times that we throw things at the wall to see if they, to see if they work. And more often than not, they do. There's a lot of, been a lot of talk about the tech that's being proposed of these IA systems and stuff. I honestly don't understand entirely the technology. I haven't looked into it completely. But it does reduce nitrogen. You're looking at, you're shaking, you're shaking your head. Doesn't reduce nitrogen?
Nope.
Okay, how do you, so are you a scientist?
I'm a homeowner.
Okay, good.
A system, it doesn't reduce nitrogen, I guarantee you that.
Precisely, but you're not a scientist, and neither am I. So what I encourage you all to do is look at the science, look at the data. If it does, if you determine that it does reduce nitrogen, then that's a positive. Then this is a positive step to take. And anything that we can do to help, to help in our environment, to help to move the ball forward, I think is a good idea, and I think that we should look at it seriously and not just say, and this isn't just, this isn't just about low-term cost of the value of your houses. We won't have any value at all, and this is just not my experience from Massachusetts. This is globally. I have seen countries decimated by poor, by poor waste management. And this is something that we are living in, we're living in the most prosperous, that's one of the best highly technologically advanced countries on the planet. There's no reason that we can't crack this, and that is by moving the ball forward, by looking at new technologies. And that's all I ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we could ask, folks come up, make your comment, I think if we had an interaction, it's going to cut into their time. Everybody's going to have a chance to make their comments. Okay, so next we have Keith Bauer.
Good evening, everyone. Keith Barber, President of the Cassett Water Quality Coalition. We're a nonprofit. We were founded three years ago this month. And we're a citizen organization. And we're here tonight, I'm here tonight with two of my colleagues, and we're representing our citizens. And those are the people that want to have results happen. So I have some charts, because that's what I like doing. So this is a picture of Hen Coe, where we all live. And this is a picture from the 1940s. Eograss everywhere. There's none right now, zero. So what our, what our citizens have tasked us to do is try to make comments, influence change, and make things. And make things happen. Uh this problem, nitrogen problem, has gone on way too long. And one thing we can't do is put it off anymore. It need, we need to take action now. These regulations are probably not popular in a lot of government offices, but they're popular with the citizens. People want things done. So um the municipal clean water group has testing of IA systems. Buzzards Bay Coalition has testing. This works. You just have to use the right thing. You have to check it out first. Make sure it's vetted. So some other um of my little factoids here. So we want to thank the Buzzards Bay Coalition for all the work they do with the Bay Watchers. So I can leave this out. People can look at it um, you know, later. So what this chart is, is thirty years of Baywatcher data from the Buzzard's Bay Coalition. So I've singled out a few special places to us. For example, in that thirty years, the Hen Coe rating, and this is achieved by five different uh measures. Hen Coe, where I live, has gone from sixty six to fifty seven. Red Brick Harbor, the inner Red Brick Harbor has gone from eighty eight to fifty three. Where the outer has gone from eighty seven to seventy six. So this, as I could, I'm going to read all these, but what the data shows is on the inside of harbors where there's homes. And people have septic systems that don't work. That's where the problem is. When you go to outer, like in in uh Pocasset Harbor, the outer number was ninety and it's only dropped to seventy six in thirty years. These numbers are consistent. There are um, there's one place here in Wareham, which is a shame. It's right on Buzzards Bay. Uh a coop cove, their inner has dropped from seventy to thirty five, their outer only from ninety seven to eighty four. So, you know, um. My, I hear cost, I hear cost being a concern and certainly it's a concern. I've read about it in the newspaper. My opinion and our group's opinion, the biggest problem is not doing it regardless of the cost. Nothing's been done for years. We need to get doing it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to uh comment on these regulations. Uh again, Robert Dwyer, the Cassett Mass, I can give you my address. I'm a member of the Pecassett Water Quality Coalition, a number of other environmental groups and uh and civic associations, but I'm speaking for myself right now. Uh uh personal observation, uh my family has been swimming, boating, fishing, et cetera, on Buzzards Bay and Cape Cod Bay since the nineteen fifties. And echoing what Captain Sean and and what Keith had said, uh frankly. We've watched it go to hell over the last fifty years. These regulations have been on the books under the Clean Water Act amendments of nineteen eighty seven since, since nineteen eighty seven. So they've been on the books for thirty five years. Shame on the department for kicking the can down the road for that long a period of time. That's why we're in the situation we are now. Um uh conceptually, uh this, the source controls IA or frankly, um central sewer systems. Will remove most of the nitrogen and will solve the problem. Um conceptually, though, the timeframe, even with the twenty year timeframe, the timeframe is too long. If you think about it, if we put source control over all of the areas that need it to get down to the TMDL levels and it takes twenty years to install them. There's still going to be a huge mass of nitrogen that's going to be in the groundwater. That's going to take another twenty plus years to uh. Uh to flush out before in the, I guess they call them sentinel monitoring stations in the TMDLs. Before you really see an improvement or get down to the TMDL levels. Uh, nobody in this room is going to be alive to see those improvements. Just think about that. Um, okay, I'm going to move forward to practicalities, financing. Uh every homeowner is going to need access to uh the equivalent of a state revolving fund for these septic upgrades. At the uh the thresholds that are there now for sewer systems, zero two or twenty or four percent based on income for long term loans. Year round homeowners on fixed incomes uh who are really in trouble are going to need some kind of a reverse mortgage where they don't pay anything. Until they sell their home. Um there's just uh no way around that. There has to be some long term financing that the state are are going to have to come forward with. Um practically, uh the implementation of this thing is impractical. The towns don't have resources to do this. They have to figure out how to enforce these regulations. Uh they the, in in practice, the uh the whole process should run the way the Title V system done where. Is done where the design installation and monitoring is all done by the private sector. Um in terms of training the contractors, uh one option might be to have uh. Schools like Cape Cod Community College has a workforce uh training and development program that might be used to to train some of these. And I'm now out of time, but I'd like to reserve more time at the end if there is any. Otherwise, I will see you in Hyannis.
Okay.
Chris Shanahan. Good evening. My name is Chris Shanahan. I'm a. I own a, I own a D night system. I've had it for eleven years and I feel like. Uh from Falmouth, I I have it because. Some town politics made my subdivision get out. I'm here representing homeowners and if they knew what was going to happen, I agree with Mr. McDonald. It'd be a line down the street. Um, first of all, the cost and the pay for this one, it's at thirty or thirty five thousand dollars a year. That's a complete misrepresentation. You can buy a system for that. You gotta maintain it. You gotta get quarter, uh quarterly test. You gotta fix parts. It it just never ends. It's a lifetime nightmare. It's not a Title V. We sit in the ground, set it and forget it. So lifetime expense is more like eighty to a hundred thousand over thirty years. Um, secondly, they don't work consistently. Um we know that because the mass DEP had never endorsed a single system, never guaranteed a single system. All they do is put out this regulation, provisional use, non-use, private use, general use. It's just a complete mess. So if you're a homeowner, you have no idea what to buy. It's not like going and buying a refrigerator. There's no reviews. You're on your own. The DEP doesn't provide any guidance. Um. Like I said, the the regulation itself, anyone's ever tried to read it, it's a giant mess. I analyze multi billion dollar banks, biggest banks in America, and you can never figure out what this regulation says. Um homeowner risk, there's a lot of homeowner risk. You put a system in, it doesn't work. Who do you call? You're stuck. Nobody to call, nobody to help you, no town, no mass DEP. You're on your own. You buy it from manufacturer. You know a little about it. There's no consumer reports. Manufacturer goes out of business. What happened? You're stuck. You got a piece of junk in your backyard. Um manufacturers work with local septic providers, okay? How many you think? I had a system. They had one rep in all of Massachusetts, Timor-Lao. And that guy did not do his job. He went out of business. There was no one that could service the system. Now in Falmouth, you're talking about putting eight to ten thousand systems in. We got like three or four hundred in Falmouth and they can't keep up with that. Um. You know, twenty, twenty years, we've been kicking the can down the road. Now it here is thirty five years. You know, no disrespect. I think we should do what it takes to clean it, but I think we should do what makes sense. Run around, implementing a regulation, enforcing homeowners to put in a system they know nothing about. The mass DEP knows nothing about. Nobody knows anything about is not the solution. You know, we don't hear about opening, we heard about opening up the the waterway. This place in Falmouth, along the Cape, all those estuaries have little openings to the ocean. Why don't they try losing to it? They open the whole bay up. And you know, it it helps. You know, I'm just saying, let's not do something that's not going to work. It costs people eighty thousand. You talk about getting a loan. Where are these people going to come up with two or three thousand a year to service their system if they can find someone to do it? Thank you.
Joan Hutchings.
Joan Hutchings, I have, I'm home, excuse me, you went through. Uh in July of twenty twenty one, I received a notice from the town of Truro. Telling me that I had to replace my septic system because it was accessible. Um, there were a hundred homes and businesses in Turin. That they were requiring to replace their septic system and it had to be done by. December thirty first of twenty twenty three. So I did what most smart people will do and I went and I got first the engineer cost me six thousand dollars. Okay, then for estimates. There are people out there that are price gouging anybody in that area that had to have this done. My first estimate was thirty five thousand dollars. The estimate that I went with was twenty four thousand nine hundred dollars. More than ten thousand dollar incre- you know, difference. So you know that guy was just, oh, these people have to have it done, you know? And I'm not somebody that has a McMansion. I've got a three bedroom home that's been in my family for a bazillion years. And that's why the septic had never been changed because it was never sold. And I take offense to somebody suggesting that I get a reverse mortgage. I'm a retired school teacher. I'm going to get a reverse mortgage. I'm going to pass this on to my GM. I'm not going to sell it. Okay, um, so we had it done in June. Okay, this is six months ago. And now this comes out. And you, like you said, in the newspaper, it says thirty to thirty five thousand dollars. I'm going to spend an additional thirty five thousand dollars. Now maybe because I have a brand new system, they might say, oh, you you just have to update this for the nitrogen. Well, how much does that cost? Nobody can give me a price on that. Not to mention that. Uh it's not like, I mean, I read the newspaper. I found out what was going on through the newspaper. Nobody told me anything that was going on. If I had known this, I probably put it, would have put off having the new septic, um septic system put in. Till if this goes through, say in January, I would have had it done after that. So I wouldn't have to worry about all this stuff. Now I have to worry about, oh, am I going to have to pay an additional thirty thousand dollars? And then if grandfathered, well, okay, grandfathered for a year, well, then I'm covered. Grandfathered for eighteen months, I'm not covered. An eighteen months isn't that long. You know, it's a three bedroom house. It's not a McMansion on the water. So I just want the state to be aware that A is people out there going to get price gouged, that I think the state should do something about those people. Um and also, I I really don't think it's fair for anybody, you're going to grandfather somebody for maybe a year. You need to grandfather him for longer than that. My brother brought bought the house next to me. And um so his septic, new septic was, and he paid twenty six thousand. That was five years ago. Okay? Um, he's going to have to put in a new septic, septic system. I just want everybody to be aware what's going on out there. The town of Truro required me to do this. I did it. Now the state's going to have me do something else. I don't know. I might put an outhouse out there. Seriously.
I have a Robert O. Can't we read the last name? He's an attorney and said perhaps he would like to comment.
Yes, I'm going to defer until a little bit later.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh Zenus Crocker.
Very much. Zenus Crocker was the Principal Clean Water Coalition. Um, you know, it's been very interesting to hear the practical um situations that people are in. This is a really, really complicated um kettle that we're in. And and first of all, I want to say, uh let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. I think having regulations is absolutely critical. Addressing this problem uh has been uh going on too long. We all know that. Uh but we need to figure out how can we have adaptive management? Really, this is the first look at these kind of regulations we've had in almost thirty years. In that period of time, so much has changed. More is going to change. We're working along with the Buzzard's Bay Coalition on new innovative alternative system technology. Some of it is incredibly promising. It's not yet fully approved, um but it is very, very promising. And one of the technologies has particularly low cost O and M and looks like it's very long lived. Um so I'm very sympathetic to the gentleman's comments of how expensive these systems have been and may continue to be. But we need to work on this and figure out uh what's the mosaic that's going to work for the community. I think a watershed permit is absolutely critical. I think it's probably unlikely uh to be successful to look at. Title V replacement in an entire NSA area in a very short period of time. The product is not currently available. So one of the things I would like to suggest today is um the EPA uh sent me to. Um a report that I've recommended everybody take a look at. This is the Hawaii, the two thousand twenty one Hawaii cesspool hazard assessment and prioritization tool. And so what's so interesting about this is taking a look at the individual situations and trying to prioritize. One of the things that I'm particularly passionate that we look at is time to travel in the watershed. All nitrogen is really not created equal. So while soaring in municipal treatments vitally important. If we're going to treat something where the groundwater doesn't actually get to the watershed for fifty years or longer. Let's not target that as the priority. Uh these watersheds are declining at an accelerating pace. Um climate change is what I think of as a force multiplier. We're turning up heat even as we add these bad things to the water. So bad things are going to happen more quickly. So what I would recommend we do is figure out how to prioritize. Look at the most troubled water bodies and let's look at what's closest to the edge in those water bodies. Chances are the people that have homes closest to the edge can actually afford alternative septic system technology. And I'm not looking to burden individuals, but I am looking to treat something that's so close to the water. That it's actually having a negative impact very, very quickly. So that's my main recommendation today. Thank you very much. I'm left with one second. Thank you.
Could the gentleman uh give you people the name of that system?
Yeah, I'll provide it and you can send it around.
Thank you.
Great, clear.
Uh great, clear, Dartmouth, uh on the Slocum River. Many of the points that have been been made today are very valid. Obviously, there has been deterioration. So I'm not going to hammer on stuff that's already been brought up. However, I will raise two two issues. One, the regulation as currently promulgated is aimed at a very small portion of the population and it has an egregious burden. You know, people who have dealt with it, it's horrendously expensive. There is nobody to do it. There are no trained qualified people out there and to say you must install best applicable technology is a moving target. As this little lady found, she put in a system one year, two years from now, somebody can come back and say, whoop, some guy on the other side of the world just came up with another one. You better put it in. Equally, the specifications of what is the best qualified. Maybe they've already got it. You don't know about my system. Is there anything out there that will measure the effectiveness on my system, on his system, on purpose, that system? No, that's not in the regulation. We have this immersive goal that we want to achieve. I live on the river. I understand your point, but it's a worldwide problem. So perhaps this should be writ- rewritten, revised such that, okay, we want to redo these systems at state expense. This could be done through taxes. This could be done through grants. And dumping loans, even subsidized loans, or sell your house to the bank to pay for it, is again. Just dumping uh debt under the individual. It's not helping them pay for it. It's not helping pay eighty thousand dollars a year in maintenance. So we need to look at this, one, define just what are we trying to do? What do you want us to do? Nobody knows what the hell it is. Nobody knows how to measure it. There are no towns that know how to measure it. Mr. Misham pointed out, they don't have people to check this out. They don't know how to inspect the house install. We don't have people that know how to install it and yet we want to pass a regulation. Which will say within five years, twenty seven hundred homes in Dartmouth alone have to have this. And there's nobody to do it. So this regulation is burdensome, unreasonable and vague. All those points have to be addressed. Spread the load over everybody. It's a worldwide problem. That all Massachusetts pay for. That's what we pay for stuff out on the West Coast, so I shouldn't be paying stuff here. I'm left with thirty five seconds.
Okay, thank you. Tim Hayes.
I have a home in Dartmouth next to Gray and I went on the uh side of the Buzzard, I was against it. I went on the side of Buzzard's Bay Coalition. They made some good points. But. What I take out today is supposedly we have this enormous problem. But the way we're going to fix it is with a couple, couple of thousand individual homeowners. It doesn't make any sense. If it's an enormous problem, then everyone should be in. It doesn't make any sense. If it's an enormous problem, then everyone should be involved in fixing it, not. So the fact that you just let, you're saying it's an enormous problem. But we're gonna, only a small group of people are part of the solution tells me you don't think it's an enormous problem. Right. The other thing is, I think if you're gonna do it, which I don't think you should the way it is. It should be credits on the line like we do for electric, for, uh, solar energy, your cars. People shouldn't have to pay for it individually. They should get credit against their taxes. That seems equitable if you're gonna force people to do something. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
But I, Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much. My name is Navarre Williams. I am a resident of South Dartmouth. Uh, I just wanted to address it from, as an active citizen. First and foremost, uh, if this is a Commonwealth issue, it should be addressed with a Commonwealth solution. It is irresponsible to mandate or promulgate regulations absent of any scientific evidence. So my request to you is to vote, one, extend the common period for all towns, municipalities, and counties to comment. And second, to ensure that we have a holistic government approach. I truly believe that in light of the bipartisan infrastructure bill. This is an infrastructure issue for the environment of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's irresponsible not to address this from a holistic government approach. I would like to see, as a taxpayer, as a citizen of South Dartmouth, a government approach that is open to the public and transparent. Those are my two requests and part of the generation X and the millennium, we will take it on to social media as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So that's everybody that we have on the list who want, uh, no, we have more, sorry. All right, Chris, we've already got you. Don McCormick.
So, uh, Don McCormick, representing, uh, Songbird Acres Trust, eighty-five homes in North Dartmouth. Uh, my background, thirty-five years in the federal government, Navy submarines, nuclear submarines. To put out requirements without numbers is something that we would all be fired for, so. In the light of transparency, I just thought I'd bring that to you. I thought, uh, Governor Baker's signing out the transparency in government is kind of a misnomer. This whole thing, zero transparency. We don't know who was on the nitrogen committee. Can't find it on your website. Have to request it, really? Um, obviously was not a well-rounded group. There's no local people that have to actually implement this stuff. There's no contractors in there. There's no innovators. I'm, uh, happy to hear that somebody is actually testing some of these systems. This is state of Massachusetts. Boston is an innovation hub. How many people from the innovation hub were in on this? I don't think you have any. I worked for the Navy who had more innovative solutions out of NAFAC, probably the worst organization in the Navy. Coming up with smart ideas to get stuff done. Haven't seen that yet. So my recommendation, I guess, like everybody else, um, revisit who was on your committees. Make it transparent. Bring in real scientists and innovators from Boston and the rest of the world. Get this done much more cheaper. And, uh, for transparency, the data's twenty years old. I looked it up on the websites. Don't see it. I looked up how many systems the Mast EP is approved on the website that actually say, uh, nitrogen reduction is three, kinda goes against all these other things that is limited availability of these systems. Uh, I did notice in some of the slide packages that there's a whole five million dollars per year to, uh, loan out to homeowners at two percent, so I'm thinking at fifty K a year. That's nine if each of those grants is, uh, four to fifty K each, which is what you taught on your website. Uh, so I think just in general, not a good systems engineering approach on this whole thing. I would start again, get the right people on the team. Um, extend the, uh, what is this period? Common period, thank you. And then look for a common solution to all. Uh, transparency in government is important right now, as you see in the national elections. Uh, be nice to have it in our hometowns, in our home state, so, uh, I'm done. Thanks.
Mark Yen.
All right, uh, my name's Mark Yen, with resident of North Dartmouth. Thank you for your time. Thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm a little embarrassed to say it's very recently that I learned about all this. I am trying to play catch-up. I believe that the vast EP is using outdated data and not including any local community entities has created an extremely arbitrary process and ended up with very capricious solutions. Mast EP is unable to provide any support to implement these, the installation of the IA systems, which obviously cannot be effectively installed or maintained uh, efficiently or in any cost-effective manner due to the lack of supplies, the lack of installation professionals, and also maintenance professionals. Um, Mast EP is also unable to prevent any price gouging, which would occur due to the above noted reasons. I'm unfortunately left with a total lack of trust with the Mast EP. And I don't understand how these hearings can be squeezed between Thanksgiving and Christmas. I have no idea how my family would afford such a system. The cost of the system and the yearly maintenance of these systems. I don't know how my family would do that. And I do request that the hearing period be extended for at least six months to allow better solutions to come to light. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Martha Holfer. I am with the Pocasset Water Quality Coalition. Uh, my family's been a long time resident of Pocasset down on the Cape ever since my great aunt owned the general store back in the twenties. Uh, my dad was a recreational fisherman and scholar. And I wish I had unpacked my Christmas gear because I would have shown you some scholar ornaments we made back in the day. You can't do that anymore. There are no scholars left in the harbor. I was a lifeguard in the town for many years. Six days a week I was in that water, rain or shine, teaching lessons. And I don't even like to swim in it anymore. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, I was one of the founding members. I was the president of the Pocasset Heights Improvement Association and Water Coalition is, uh, consists of members of various neighborhood organizations in the Pocasset area. I'm very familiar with these water quality issues. We have had town meetings with our membership in the Pocasset Heights Improvement Association since two thousand and six. And I've been watching the Buzzard Bay Coalition numbers go down and down and down. I think we all agree this is a serious issue. Uh, the composition of our neighborhoods have changed over the years. It's changed from a summer community of two months to year-round communities with people with bigger houses, washing machines, dishwashers, more toilets, more showers. Uh, we have one toilet and two sinks born up when I was a kid. Um, I look at these proposed regulations as a response to inadequate planning by our government, our towns, and our communities over a long period. There is no magic solution. But a community-based approach to watershed management as well as individual homeowner responsibilities are part of the solution. The proposed ways do move us in that direction. The message I hear from my community is that improving our water quality is critically important. Both for our enjoyment of our environment as well as our long-term economic values of our properties. Uh, the overwhelming challenge I hear is how can we afford this system-wide improvement in septic management? We cannot afford not to do it. But we have to look to our government leaders and private industry to help us fund this and to develop the staff capabilities to make it a viable industry in Massachusetts. Other critical watersheds across the country have been successful in slowing the, the decline in water quality. And we here in Massachusetts can do it too. In fact, some communities already have worked. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I believe we're done with the comments from your folks. We're in the room and we'll switch to the people who wanna. Uh, you, yeah, you perhaps have become a yes.
I, I really don't have to go, go to the, uh, the board and make this point.
Well, except that, sir, we, yeah. Thank you. We're sorry.
I'm sorry. Technology, technology.
Uh, good evening. My name is Robert Overkarr. I'm a lawyer in Massachusetts and I represent one of the several people in, uh, Westport, uh, Westport Point, um, and Dartmouth. Two points that were especially telling to me tonight, first was from Mr. Alny, who says, as a scientist, there's not enough data yet. Other people said, there's not enough, the, the regs are twenty years old. So they have to be developed currently with scientific input, in my view. And the other speaker, Mr. Williams, said it best, I think. If we are serious, and there's no doubt that everyone here tonight is acting in perfect, good, good faith, no problem. But the problem has to be, if it's serious, which it obviously is, has to be resolved at least at the Commonwealth level. And if you're serious about paying for it, have the Commonwealth tax appropriately and have every citizen who wants to go to Pocasset and other places will enjoy the environment as it should be enjoyed. So it is, it's, you know, you, as a lawyer, I can tell you, you throw all the stuff against the wall and it equals a tax. Might as well just send out a, you know, another tax bill. The best way to do this, in my view, is to, to stop everything, pause, listen to the Elmes of the world and listen to the Williams of the world. And Mr. Clear, they live this stuff on their properties. So I think a pause is not just a word or, I think it might be, as Mr. Alny alluded to, there is a legal issue here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I hope a third time's a charm. So I think we're ready for the folks who are online.
First, we will have Donald Law. Donald, please prepare to speak as I explain the comment system for those on Zoom. If you have not done so already, please raise your virtual hand if you wish to comment. When it is your turn, you will see a prompt on your screen to join as a panelist. Please click yes. Once you join as a panelist, please unmute yourself to present your comment. You may also turn on your video if you would like. Your three minutes will begin once you start speaking. Donald, I will now invite you to join as a panelist. And after Donald finishes, the next person on deck will be Alberto Tavares.
Yeah, hi, uh, I'm Donald Law and one of the most impactful things I've heard tonight is, um, the perfect is the enemy of the good. Um, I've been, we've been on the Cape for probably fifty years and I've been a homeowner in Cootuat on Old Post Road. And, um, I've watched the destruction of the Cape waters over these years. Uh, it's been sad to see everything disappear over time. And really nothing's been done. I remember going to the State House years ago and watching the TMDLs and, and had the progress of some of the degradation of these body. It's time to do something. I strongly support the regulations. Uh, Title V pollutes, uh, we obviously have to do something. But I say that with serious reservations, um, and that I do support the regulations, but I think it should be understood that these technologies now are removing ninety percent nitrogen. I mean, these are proven by scientific methods. It's, her, hearing other people complain about it, we need to actually demonstrate that it has to be done empirically so everyone is confident these systems work. You know, if we look at searing, uh, the proposal for thirty years of searing at a cost of one point four billion dollars only adds ten percent more homeowners, leaving seventy percent unsued. That's at a cost of a hundred thousand per household for sewer. Um, in retrospect, if you had these other IA systems that work, that's maybe twenty to thirty thousand. But the most overriding thing, which I think everybody agrees to, there has to be equity here in terms of how these things paid for. The average homeowner has to have relief on this and it shouldn't be a reverse mortgage. It may not even be a tax. It should be some sort of state relief or grant, grant to get this done. And the second piece that has to be done is the maintenance. Because if you come up with a system that really does work, that can be done in, in large numbers, it's gonna have to be maintained like a utility. It should not be up to the homeowner. So my two provisions, my, my main concerns are equity and how you pay for it. That I think we have to go forward. I strongly support the regs. It's time to get moving. But I think we have to demonstrate systems that work and we have to figure out how to relieve the homeowner of this financial burden and also relieve him of the maintenance of these systems because they're going to need to be maintained. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's in her backpack. And she loves them.
Next, we'll have Alberto Tavares. Alberto, please click yes to join as a panelist. Uh, and on deck, we will have DeeDee Nickerson.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Alberto Tavares. I'm a resident of North Dartmouth, um, since nineteen ninety-seven. And I'm a member of the, uh, I'm also a part of the Songbird Acres, uh, neighborhood that, uh, um, Don McCormick, um, alluded to. Uh, and a member of the Board of Trustees for that neighborhood. I think we can all agree that it's our combined responsibility to take care of our environment and that we should seek, uh, opportunities to improve it. However, my concern, uh, is that, uh, the decisions here on the Title V, uh, proposals are based on old data as many people have already, uh, discussed and, and old research that may not include impacts, changes to the environment due to global warming, geological differences. And, uh, and, and in many cases, newer unregulated polluters such as composting facilities that are proliferating across our state. And my question as is, why is the focus on septic systems, uh, focused on septic systems, which some of these studies that you are, are, are utilizing to make these decisions, um, septic only accounts for about twenty-nine to thirty-four percent of the nitrogen pollution. Um, so are we just low-hanging fruit that are easier to force into compliance with, with a government heavy-handedness? What is being done about the remaining sixty-six to seventy-one percent of polluters? Which includes farms, includes corporations, includes, as I said, composting. What is being done for the remainder of that? Because to me, we're just solving a very, uh, a small percentage of the polluters and you still have a, a big problem out there. And at an average cost of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to install these systems. And I was told twelve thousand, it sounds like it's even more than that, uh, annual, annually to maintain, uh, these systems. That's a heavy burden for many of the homeowners in these areas, um, that are already impacted greatly by inflationary pressures, high fuel costs. Um, and, and it's to implement a solution that the Mast EP can't even guarantee will solve the issue. Um, so, I mean, talking about costs and financing, financing is still a long-term loan. It's still a loan. It has to be paid back. Reverse mortgages, that nauseates me that someone even suggests that someone use a reverse mortgage. When many of our elderly folks, this is their only asset that they wanna leave for their children and leave behind. Reverse mortgage won't allow you to do that. Um, and how do you guarantee that you're not gonna be taken advantage of by predatory contractors and price gouging? So, uh, it's, it's really disconcerting, um, how, how you guys went, went by making these, these proposals. Um, and I think it's really short-sighted. Um, uh, and regarding transparency, I can't speak any more eloquent, eloquently than Don already did about transparency. There is no transparency here and that is something that's very, very concerning this day and age. Um, with all the issues we're having with, uh, around our country with government. Um, and just to close out, I'm, I'm really skeptical about the scheduling and location. And just to close out, I'm really skeptical about the scheduling and location of these hearings. This is a very busy time of year, as many have already alluded to. And having a hearing in Lakeville, when some of the impacted homeowners are in Westport and Dartmouth, it makes it hard for us to show up in person and make our, and voice our opinions. So I'm really skeptical about how you guys went by scheduling this stuff. But in closing, I, I, I think you need more transparency. I think we need more time to make right decisions. And I think we need to gather more data and also look at the other polluters that are out there that you're not doing anything about right now.
Thank you, sir. Time's up.
DeeDee lowered her hand. So next we will actually have Carol McIntyre and Glenn McCarthy is on deck. Carol, please join as a panelist. Next, we'll have Glenn McCarthy.
Hi, everyone. This is Glenn McCarthy from MasP, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Member and co-founder of Mashpee Clean Waters and a special project lead for the citizens for the protection of Rockaway Bay. Our estuaries are rapidly collapsing. I've, I've lived on Papa Nessa Bay for over 50 years. It used to be clear water with millions of juvenile fish, sandy bottoms and just, just a wonderful place for, for citizens. It's now black muck that's feet deep and slimy green, smelly algae. It's, it's very sad. On our ponds, it's now sometimes unsafe to walk your dog. Because if your dog drinks the water in some of our ponds, you, you know, the dog could be sick. We have tons of data. There's really no dispute on what the issue is. We know how to solve it. We just need to have the resolve to do it. And I would like to credit everybody here for, for being part of that solution. I have two recommendations. One is, is do it now or do it faster. This has been delayed for 20 or 30 years. Delay is not the answer. The second one is to really focus and ensure that we have proper sizing of systems. We've seen an explosion of very, very large structures. You know, typical, typically very close to the, to the bays and the water. These structures are often on a quarter acre of land, which is not enough to process the wastewater that they put out in any system. They're usually permitted as a three bedroom house. Yet many of these houses sleep 20 or 30 people. They're, they're rented out as Airbnbs, which are, have very different flow rates from what a three, you know, two, three bedroom family might normally do. Some of them are used as large event facilities. They're almost akin to a commercial structure, frankly. And I would strongly recommend that we look at flow rates and ensure that whatever system is put in, that it is designed for the proper amount of flow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we will have Carol McIntyre and DeeDee Nickerson on deck. Carol, please unmute if you can. Thank you.
My name is Carol McIntyre and my family has had property in Lakeville for about 75 years and bad poise for probably the last 50. I just found out about this issue really today, not that I haven't been following this. But I'm, I'm just in awe in listening to everyone's comments. And there's, there's no question that there's, should be for all citizens, a support for clean water for all people. And I'm certainly 100% behind that. There's no doubt about that. But as a citizen, I'm listening to this and I feel like we need time to explore the science and technology more than what I'm hearing right now. I'm, I'm just surprised at the amount of science that exists that doesn't seem to be in place in the consideration for what's being looked at right now. I'm very concerned about the burden for homeowners. I don't think the average homeowner can do this alone. I do believe in maybe some equity here and that maybe looking at having all citizens take part in this. We can't hear you anymore?
Carol, can you hear us? Maybe we can come back to Carol. And so next is DeeDee Nickerson.
Sorry. Um, hot here. Hi, I'm DeeDee Nickerson. I'm a resident of Cootuat on the Cape. And thank you for hosting the hearing today. And thank you for all the participants, the people who made the time out of their busy schedules. I'll just start by saying, I, it's, it's been really educational to hear comments from both sides. I'm actually very much in favor of these regulations. And, you know, like many people have said, you know, it's, it's very clear, like our bays in Cootuat, West Bay and Ostraville, North Bay. We had Glenn from McQuaid. It's, it's, we're in a, we're in kind of a fairly dire situation with regard to nitrogen and pollution in general. And it's, you know, we do nothing. We wait, we wait years, we see it get worse. There are a number of people have cited data being 20 years old. I mean, you know, guys, have, are there less houses? Are there less people? Is there less activity? Is there less pollution than there was 20 years ago? Because that data should be helping those who aren't supporting these efforts. And I think that, you know, look, there are people who have differences of opinion on this, but like, let's look for the similar similarities here. We really need to do something. And these regulations aren't perfect and the, you know, the economics of it aren't perfect, but like those, those, those can be worked out. And as Z Crocker from Barnstable Clean Water Coalition pointed out, they've got, they've got a system they're testing that's relatively affordable. And let's start with people who can afford it. Let's talk about those who can't afford it, who live on the, who live on the water, who are, you know, where the, where the, where the pollution is going more directly into our bays and estuaries. Let's start with the people who can't afford it. And maybe there's, there's an opportunity here to work out amendments for implementation that address the, the economics of this because it, it shouldn't be a burden, frankly. This is, you know, this is about us. Would we, would we defund our fire departments? Would we, you know, would we, you know, this is as critical as that to the sustainability of the, you know, the, the economy of the Cape and the economy, you know, again, I'm not so familiar with what's going on in Dartmouth and Westport and in those areas. But this, this, this is, this, if, if we want to maintain the economy of Cape Cod and, I mean, more importantly, maintain the status of our harbors and estuary, estuaries, this is a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can see if, if Carol is still out there, if she wants to continue with her comments. She got cut off a bit.
Yes, I believe Carol's back online.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Carol.
Unmute.
I believe I'm back online.
Yes, you are.
Thank you so much. I, I just think my final comment was really about the equity for all and that maybe that would be an opportunity for not only homeowners, but all citizens who want to just use the, any of the areas, whether it's the Cape, southeastern Massachusetts, water safety, fishing, boating, just enjoying our, our beautiful environment that has been really decimated over the years. And also other industries that contribute to this issue. Because it feels to me like clean water for all means that we all need to contribute to the solution to this problem as well. And that's really all I had left to say on that comment. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. So I think we've finished with the folks online. Does anybody else in the room want to make a comment?
I've got a couple more things to say.
Okay, that's what the timeout.
Couple of more points that I didn't get to earlier. My next bugaboo is cesspools. Cesspools have to go. That's a 17th century technology.
Sorry, so your name again?
Robert Dwyer. Okay, Pippa Castle. I apologize. Cesspools are a 17th century technology that have to go. There's absolutely no excuse for it. I live on near Pippa Castle Harbor. And when I walk around my neighborhood during a wet period, my nose tells me which houses have cesspools instead of Title V septic systems. Pippa Castle Harbor is listed on the 303D list. In addition to the nitrogen problem, which is extreme, it's listed as impaired by fecal coliforms. Guess where that comes from? It's not from Title V systems. It's not from ducks. It's not from any other excuses that people have come up with. But there has to be a way to get, get those out of there. Pippa Castle Harbor is not alone in that. Yesterday's Cape Cod Times on the front page had a story that shell fishing in Pamit Harbor on the outer Cape is still closed and it's closed because of fecal coliforms. So it's the same problem. There are cesspools that are around there. These things have been grandfathered by legal trickery, by trusts and other shenanigans, so that they can get passed down from generation to generation. And these people can continue basically to pollute with bacteria long after they should have had Title V systems by even the, the Title V regulations, which were just somewhat outmoded. Okay, that's that point. My other point is that the, the main stems of Buzzards Bay and Cape Cod Bay should be monitored. And when the conditions start to show over time, they probably need TMDLs for nitrogen. In Cape Cod Bay, the document, I'm sorry, in Buzzards Bay, the decline of eel grass is well documented. When I go out there and see it, what's left of the eel grass is covered with a green epiphytic slime. It's really in bad shape. Cape Cod Bay has a recently documented zone of death every summer. The Division of Marine Fisheries' solution to this is to tell lobstermen, we'll just put your traps someplace else where the lobsters won't die when they get inside of it. The, the reason it's dying is because there's a depletion of oxygen on the bottom coming from organic matter, coming from the death of phytoplankton, algae in the, in the water column fertilized by nitrogen. The state needs to monitor both of those and get on the stick about doing TMDLs. Thank you.
Okay. And if you could restate your name?
Yes, my name is Chris Shanahan. I'm from Bama. Maybe I overstated it. My, my talk wasn't all about affordability. I own my system. If I had to buy a new one, I could buy a new one. That, that's not what it's about. It's about practicality. You get 8,000 systems in Bama put in in five years, no way, not even close. Great systems out there in the works. Are they going to be ready next year? Probably not. So we got to start doing something? Yes. Town like Bama, I'm not on any committee. They got permeable barriers. They're trying all different times. The answer isn't just septic. As I heard tonight, it's only 30% of the problem. You know, not to be a smart guy, but walk around the yacht with a with a D night system, it's going to smell pretty bad too. It's going to be like you have a cesspool in the yacht because it emits CO2. So it's pretty unpleasant in my neighborhood, depending on which way the wind is blowing. You know, so it's not, it's not a walk in the park. It's not as easy as, it's not just let's put in septic. I mean, of course, I'm all for the environment and doing what makes sense, but ramming through, you know, you got to put in, you know, how many thousand systems that you don't know what you're going to do, isn't the solution. I think the Mass DEP needs to look at what other states do, like Rhode Island, they have a more collegial approach to this. They don't require every single system, which are all municipal waste system in your backyard, to be tested every quarter. They allow you to test the same system and sample, which is scientific. Everybody has, there's 100 systems out there that are the same. Why do you got to test every system every quarter? We don't do that for our cars. We don't go to the doctors that way. Why not sample the systems that are in that match and then see what the results are? Because I can test my system quarterly, but there's, there's nothing I can change that's going to change the result. So I, I don't know what I get out of testing. It's like, you know, it's just, it just doesn't make sense. It's a barbaric setup that the Mass DEP has and it really hasn't taken any leadership, although the solution is definitely with private industry and, and the science community. But your regulations, you really got to look at what you're requiring of residents because people have put them in on volunteer basis. Then when they find out, we've had test runs, they find out what it costs, how hard it is, they lose their enthusiasm for it. This is no support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have one last one?
You may. If you could restate your name as well.
Don McCormick, sorry. I, I think one of the things I forgot earlier was a little confused. The Mass DEP is pushing for composting, which is a source of nitrogen getting into the water, at least in Dartmouth Westport area. And yet we have this regulation, which is trying to reduce nitrogen getting into the water. So it seems to me like there's one hand doing one thing, pushing for something that is increasing nitrogen. In fact, we have garbage coming from other parts of the state down into our area that is polluting the watershed. In the meantime, you're trying to hit up, DEP is trying to hit up the homeowners to solve this problem when there's other contributors, as has been stated before. So it'd be nice if DEP kind of regulates itself and gets the two hands talking to each other. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
The problem with asking is you get.
Yes. But we want to.
All right. So I want to just put some numbers into the record here. My name is Robert Almy. These are, I will recommend to the Board of Public Works that this information be in a written comment letter. We meet the day before the close of public comment. On the third page of the executive summary of the TMDL document, there is a figure ES dash A and it indicates that 43% of the nitrogen, total nitrogen in the estuary is attributable to wetlands. 8% to atmospheric deposition. 13% to impervious surfaces, including highways and airports. And 14%, 14% to septic systems. Even with 100%, that's not going to, efficiency with retrofit. It's not going to do what needs to be done. And I will point out, there are roughly 2,000 septic systems in the Slocum River watershed. And if we're talking about retrofits of And if we're talking about retrofits of ten thousand dollars or more, that's twenty million dollars from people who don't live near the coast because most of these septic systems are not near the coast. These are folks like some of the folks that have given testimony tonight, who are retired and not, don't have a lot of cash sitting around. As to the issue of doing a watershed plan, "Inbayment Restoration and Guidance for Implementation Strategies for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts" is dated two thousand and three. "The site-specific nitrogen thresholds for southeastern Massachusetts in payments, critical indicators" dated two thousand and three. These are from DEP's watershed. Anybody here drive to this hearing in a twenty-year-old car? I used to drive old Volvos. I did it for forty years because I'm cheap. Okay, I never, I only got two cars over twenty years. Okay. The data need to be looked at again. This is not an issue that we don't want to do something to improve the inbaitments, but we want to do something that makes sense and is effective. It's got to be feasible. It's got to be economically feasible and technically feasible. And again, what might work on Cape Cod was sandy soils and a single-source aquifer, sole-source aquifer. And it has a situation very much like Long Island. It's been very well studied. That set of regulations should not apply to other areas of the Commonwealth that have very different geologic and hydrologic settings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room? And we'll give the opportunity to folks online. If there's anybody else online, I just want to remind you that if you do want to comment, you have to raise your virtual hand. Okay, it appears we have heard from everybody who desires to provide comments at this hearing. Before closing the hearing, hearing, just wanted to double-check again or triple-check. Is there anyone else who desires to comment? I think we've gone over that. I think all of you provided comments tonight, as well as those who have been in attendance. All the comments from this hearing and the written comments received by 5:00 PM on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two will be considered before Mass DEP finalize, finalizes the proposed draft regulations. There being no further testimony, this public hearing is now closed at November, on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty-four. Thank you very much. We can stop recording now.